Yeah.
I got a good question.
And then I'll, I'll put it in I could this. Yeah. Yeah, we didn't find it. It was their life.
Hopefully I want to yearly.
Yeah, I think so. Yes.
So, yeah, you know, I don't know, especially with like the sun.
And she's just not, doesn't like to go.
Yeah, sometimes, no, but yeah, you don't hear. Looks like you're showing.
How do you say? It looks like it's possible.
Blank calls or nothing.
Are you recording?
Yeah.
Laura.
Here.
Dan, Mary. Gary.
Yeah.
Uh, who of the agenda? Do we have any additions to the agenda?
Well, I'd like to add, uh, Jennifer Spears, a potential for the planning commission position. I didn't word that right.
Well, we'll put it.
New business?
K three.
K three.
We'll be under new. K three?
Yep.
Well, what was the position?
Member to the commission.
I don't have an addition, but maybe a possible clarification. I had asked to add J one to the agenda and I'm wondering if J three is kind of the same. Should those be somewhat combined?
One is the original, the other ones are second and they're doable in the overlay, right? Are they different?
Well, I think what I was anticipating is we would need to talk about.
Both of them?
Both of them.
Okay. I think we just leave it like it is and talk about both of them.
Okay.
It's on the agenda. Anyone else?
I'm moved to approve the agenda. With adding K, the new business, K three.
Do you have a motion by Mary, second by Gary?
Yes. Second.
Pardon?
Second.
Yeah. We got a motion by Mary, second by Gary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Gary. Do you have any public comments on this public comment? Any public comments? Mary?
Karen.
Karen?
Yes, the starters, the fact that the outline fits on two pages is great, thank you for that. And Mr. Spicer still had opportunity in his supervisor's report to, um, put in his additional comments. And, uh, I will say, I don't know how much of that you might get into tonight. Um, Supervisor Spicer was right to point out the need for some tighter processes. But there have been some more or less personalized interpretations that come across as critical, um, that can be destructive to the group. So I'm hoping that, uh, we rise to a little bit more, um, leadership rather than bossy as far as who's on that. Last summer, I concerned, uh, as it plays your head seemed to favor bringing, uh, battery storage facility into the township. And at that time expressed that such facilities were safe and it indicated that they that's real facility exemption. Uh, my understanding is that there is no applicable exemption yet. And I think our citizens voiced that they didn't want the facilities at all. So I, I surely would object to special tax treatment for the unwanted facilities. Um, so when you get to the part where you're talking about if it's a Creo and if somebody's meeting directly with, um, the supervisor as CEO, I'd be more comfortable with at least one other person there that wasn't necessarily pro the facility. And I would hate to see zoning go away because of some arguments. And as far as zoning, it is beneficial as long as you can still enforce it. And that's where we really struggle. Um, and I, I can speak for Gary a little bit. I think that he did volunteer, he did not volunteer for zoning enforcement, but he kind of got sucked into that when he stuck up to help with lighting. So it does seem to me more attention possibly in the budget for maybe more personnel and enforcement. Our citizens have been very supportive of police protection. Law enforcement is the sheriff department's primary mission. But Sheriff Abbott did confirm their service may include some medical response. Uh, squad cars are known for quick response times and this could immediately be some pressure on the emergency services budget. And I guess that's it for right now.
Done?
Yep.
Anyone else? Well, I guess I'd like, I'll make a comment. On the battery storage system, I said something to the fact that, uh, they're a lot safer now than they have been in the past. The other thing I said, somebody asked me if they could get a tax exemption and I looked it up and I said they could get a 12% up to, uh, I think it was 15 years. And I'm just going off my memory on that, but they would be allowed to do that. The township would have to approve whether they do it or not, not just one board member. So they can ask and we can reject it or you can say a smaller period of time, then less reduction. Any other public comment? Moving on to the consent agenda. Anyone have any, uh, issues with the accounts payable?
I had one, uh, one question that was answered, so I don't have a question about that or payroll or whatever.
Payroll expenses, questions? Any questions on the banking balances? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Jason move, can I get a second?
A second.
Gary's second? No, roll call vote, Jason?
Yes.
Kara? Dan, yes, Mary?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Information and reports, fire chief.
We should have all of everything in front of you.
You're good?
Wait till later for the rest of stuff.
Okay, Sheriff?
Uh, not a big change from the, uh, month to month, still seeing a lot of animal lose animal fights, um, dogs getting obligations. We got one horse that we chased, but regardless, that's the biggest focus for Columbia Township the last few weeks. Um, yeah, everything else, everybody business as usual.
Crime down?
Winter, so a little better, but.
Too cold to go out, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Road commission. It was nice meeting with your boss the other day. Nice conversation. Oh, there's only military conservation. Uh, any of the board member want to talk about their, uh, reports?
I have a short, uh, didn't turn in a retina on a short verbal one. Uh, only that the couple of cases, uh, one in particular, Circuit Court to pop off could be having a, uh, date on that, uh, relatively soon. And I've, uh, had a couple of other complaints come in about trash and garbage and stuff and places like Dix Road and a couple of other places and I've driven by those and the two that I checked, uh, were unfounded. So I don't know whether they cleaned them up or I, I don't know. But anyway, I checked them out, uh, and it was nothing, nothing there. So, uh, another one came in about that possible violation for, uh, three or four mobile homes being moved into a parcel that, uh, is not in, in the, uh, that was, isn't established as a migrant camp. Uh, so we'll be looking into that as soon as we get, get in there with the snow. Apparently they're living in their year round and, uh, there's four trailers in one parcel, which can't be done. And it's not, it's not zone, it's not included in the migrant facility according to Lansing. So we checked it out, probably have to have removed. That's all.
I have a bit more of a report under new business, but I would love to take the opportunity to give a shout out and thanks to Deputy Latt. Uh, my daughter took her first spin on the ice into the ditch and and Deputy Latt's came across the scene before I could get there and help block traffic. So my son and I could try to pull her out of the ditch, which didn't work. But, uh, it was very gracious with his time and I was super happy to see a friendly face. So thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? JC, you're on.
So I asked for a couple of things to put on the, uh, agenda tonight so that we can begin talking. These are the things that you guys were asked me about last time, where we come up with some funding. So I went and talked to some town chiefs and, um, uh, Derek from Bangor says, well, we don't buy the whole truck. We buy it on, on a, on a installment purchase agreement. He goes, and we've got three years, been in five years and the next one's gonna be 10 years. And so while the cost of the vehicle wind up being more because of interest, it's more chewable, but at the moment you lost your, your connection.
I know. It's, it's glitching.
And so that's, that's an option too. And he says that the one there in town normally does a very good job, um, doing that. He gave me a, uh, he gave me a copy of his last agreement that he did, uh, to kind of look through things. Needs bylaws. But it takes it from a half a billion hours down to 50,000 dollars a year. Or the same truck, but you're not paying it over the course of five, 10, 15 years. So I mean, that's one of the options, uh, that is out there and we can pursue that if, if so directed. I, I just hit on that one there. Our primary engine, uh, will be 15 years old in November of next year of 2026. So in November of 2026, we have to either have a plan to buy a new frontline truck or a new frontline truck. I mean, it's got to be installed that we're, we're going to, we're, we're in the purchase moment. Um, and then to keep said truck, then it needs a refit, uh, that, that frontline engine will need a refit there. If we're to keep it. And if not, well, then also whatever else. So that's what I had for that. Uh, I did some security upgrades, uh, at the station, uh, in my maintenance budget. It's just upgrades that are long overdue. They are, it's a, uh, a keypad lock like we've had, but this one now is attached to the internet. And we can see who's coming into the building rather than just accessing of that number. Now we know exactly who's coming in and at what times. Now we don't know exactly why they're going in there, but that's what the, the camera system that was installed a couple of years ago by the township. That we can use that if we needed to see what's going on. Um, so the security upgrades are there. We got to do one more door yet to make it totally feasible. The rest of them will just stay as regular locks, E locks. And the only, uh, the only doors that will have multiple users, um, that are not fire department personnel will be at the front door. So anybody that is coming through there can get a, a code from me or my brother, any of the officers and they'll come in through the front door. Um, furnace is complete, uh, that secondary furnace. We decided to do that for a lot cheaper than what we thought, $5,500. Uh, and that is up and running. And now our friend Mr. Latt is not freezing. Just keeps her up. Your statement? Not cold anymore? Well, not as cold as you were.
That is cold outside.
It's still cold outside, but that's.
It's still cold outside, but it's much more manageable.
Right. Uh, the septic line, we found lots of fun things with that. Uh, you authorized me to spend $6,500. I only spent $5,150. I used a different company to get that done. And what evidently had happened is when it was going in, for whatever reason, it came out of the building, went out of the parking lot, went across the parking lot, came back at another angle, then straight in across the way. There was, there was five bends in the, in the thing. He just killed the whole that and it comes straight out the building right to the septic. So that has been repaired. Now there is, uh, uh, he left, uh, Zudo is his last name. And he, um, left a stack of gravel. So as it settles down over the winter time, uh, we can put that in there and then we can figure out what occurs after, after said time. And it's a common problem, South Haven said that they had the same problem with theirs. Uh, and they had to dig it up and do all that kind of razzmatazz with it too. Uh, in our class finished up last night, uh, we will be putting five new licenses. Well, hopefully we'll be putting five new uh, licenses on, uh, after they take their test. Steven and Leslie and John and Amanda and Kevin uh, will be our new licenses that rotate in. Uh, Hayden and Paloma and Daniel, while cadets took the class as well and will be testing as well. But they have to wait till they're 18 to actually do any EMS work. So, uh, that will be shortly. They'll be turning 18 over the course of the next year. Uh, current staffing, uh, we have 15 members on our roster at this time. Uh, we have three cadets and one aux, so a total of 19 people. Of those 19 people, uh, 15 are operatives. Uh, of those 15 people, eight are medical with only, with three of those eight being medical only. Uh, and then 11 people on the roster being fired. Uh, and of that, um, there are three of those that are in train. So they, they can't go in without anybody else. Uh, we had a family dinner, uh, and when I mean my family is, you know, the fire department had a family dinner uh, last month, and that was nice to have everybody in the same house, uh, at the same time that we had, uh, hot luck. We had ice rescue training this last Saturday. Uh, we started with breakfast at eight o'clock and then at nine o'clock we went outside and to the warm weather. And we had ice rescue training on Upper Jump Lake. Uh, we had to cut through, I don't know, was it six inches spice? It wasn't realistic to have ice.
It was eight inches.
Because it was too, I mean, you could drive a vehicle and it was so thick. But anyway, um, we had 25 people there, uh, at that training, uh, with four departments represented and two different classes. Uh, high school classes being represented there. Then we finish off the day with pizza and the fastest ever decommission or de- demobilization of, uh, ice rescue we had in all of the years. It was literally like blinking. We were done. Uh, just a note, awareness to the world, cold weather is snapping through. Uh, tomorrow morning will be negative five without any wind, uh, and so please be mindful of that. Anything that looks wet is not wet. It's ice. Uh, it's too cold to, uh, the salt won't work. So even if you see the salt trucks going through, that just won't happen. Uh, it's too cold for that. So be mindful of that. Um, there's been some trunk and all, uh, there's multiple people on the department that didn't seem to get paid for last month for some reason. I think that was probably an error or something that they were telling me to ask about it. So I am, um, and beyond that.
Do you have their names?
It's literally everybody. Every, everybody that's, and maybe it's a paper, the paper stuff they got way late. We talked about that before about having, um.
So they, they're not, they didn't, they get paid by the month. So which?
Nobody got paid for the month of February.
December or January.
January, sorry.
They, we did that.
Maybe just, and maybe that's going on to me. But I, I'm just repeating what they told me.
Okay. It has to be out by February 10th. So they should have, we, we did lots of $9.43 checks.
Okay. And, and maybe they just didn't get them. But I was asked to ask and I said, okay, I will.
It would be helpful if we could do direct deposit, they get them faster.
You gave, well, you gave me those things and I have gotten, I sent, handed them out, but they did not give them them back to me. I will make that note uh, to have that out to the people again. Um.
They were paid. So then the next week.
Well, I saw it in the, in the blog. So I'm like, well, that never happens that way. And I told them that, but.
Yeah, just let me know within like the next week and I'll double check everything.
I didn't figure it'd be a problem, but like you said, you asked me to ask.
No, no.
So I'm asking.
And if they were male, who knows what's going on with the male.
Yeah.
Right. Um, and then finally, uh, to again, to alleviate some of the, the cost problems. Um, there was a, a draft resolution that we found somewhere that you guys had looked at before to, uh, bill, um, insurances for our services. I did some quick numbers based off of the, the, um, the budget that I saw. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but we'll use these as rough numbers. $2,689,422 total dollars coming in in the year. So, uh, we're trying to fix 1.7% of that as a problem. And that's just, that's my comment for that. My total payroll of the overall budget for the township is 4% rounded up. So just some thoughts to think about as we're preparing for sharing one. That's it.
I have a question. Um, on the fire truck, could you explain to everybody?
Sure.
Is it a recommendation or a requirement that you have any fire truck every 15 years? And how are some of the departments that we see have old fire trucks? So I, we're just confused.
Sure. It's an NFPA standard.
It's a standard, is that a requirement or?
That's up to you. So here's the thing is that, uh, the state of Michigan has adopted NFPA as their standard for, for their level of service. So you can decide not to do that, but if something happens, you have to be able to back that up on why you didn't. Uh, and so it's a standard. So it's, it's an unwritten rule or law, if you will. Um, so that's the best, that's the best I can give you. Because you're a municipality, you decide what you want to do. Um, you don't even have, have a fire department. I'm sure you're aware of that. Uh, that's not in your charter anywhere. So, um, they can't force you to buy a new fire engine, but you take on a greater liability if you don't. So sometimes it's, it's either you're doing it or you're not type of thing. You don't want to be like the deer in the middle of the road freezing there.
Does it affect the ISO rating?
Oh, yeah, very much so. So your ISO rating, uh, is affected by your pumps. How, how many gallons per minute you can run, how many, um, where your water sources are and how far away they are, uh, your, your public. And everybody may have a different ISO rating as well, depending on where they're at. Uh, that's not as effective as too much, as much as your training. So apparatus, gallons per minute and training. So, uh, it's your biggest hitters on your ISO rate.
Cause you can have the best equipment in the world, but without documented training.
Right. So.
Means absolutely nothing.
You have to have, I mean, you get, you get points if, uh, say you, you are around a, a training center. So if you have a training center in your region, uh, you get better points if that training center has two stories and even better points if it has three stories. So, uh, it, it gets that in depth. How many hours a year do we train on hazardous material? How many hours a year do we train on? Uh, any given thing, officer, leadership, uh, instructor, all those different things.
So is there something we should be saying to our insurance company? Cause when I called, it said I saved like $8 with our ISO. So.
Well, that may be true depending on where you're at. So where you're at in relation to where everything else is. So it might be true. Um, but I do know that we had an ISO, uh, uh, evaluation, I want to say two years ago. It's gonna be in that two to three years ago range. So, um, and I don't know how, I don't, I, I can't speak to, to the accuracy of, of that information. That's what I'm saying.
I'm just saying, are we supposed to say something else to them? Like we have this rating and they seem to know.
If I, if I, if I were to guess, you'd probably have a, a rating of eight, right? So the rating between eight and nine, which is like the worst, uh, really not a big deal. But if, if you were to get a, uh, um, another, another walkthrough of the ISO office and you were to drop it down to say like a six or a seven, you might see a substantial change. So that's, that's how they do the math.
Okay.
So, um, right. And it may be different for you or you or whoever.
The only comment I have since you got these lock changes and stuff, I think that, uh, I think that it would be appropriate for all the board members to have their own code. So if you want to do that, that'd be great for.
Give me a four to eight digit code and I'll put it in there tonight. I can do it from up.
We give you the number.
You give me the number that you want to have.
Okay.
And I will put it in.
One, 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 one taken.
Okay. But you really want to touch it.
Okay, we're all set there. Let's move over to, uh, an introduction of our attorney. We have Laura here from Boston, whoa.
We talked about Creo. Were you, there was that resolution for the cost recovery. Is that something you were considering tonight? Cause that does need.
It is what we call a first read tonight.
Okay.
And what it would, what we are proposing is that we the first time, first two times that we go to your house is free. But if you're a frequent flyer, that we will start charging you thereafter.
It just needs to be adapted as an ordinance when you adopt it and not a resolution.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. I saw.
And it's just gonna come your way after we get the first. And it's just gonna come your way after we get the first.
For some reason, I compass put it under that, and I think we're gonna talk about it in page two.
There's a resolution. Okay, it's two different documents, though.
Is it?
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, there are two different things there.
Well, then I take back what I just said.
So we're gonna talk about it.
There's a resolution that we, we're doing that does the cost that goes with it.
Got it.
So one of them is doing the cost and the other one is doing the order.
I haven't read that, sorry. I approve. All right.
So the board is gonna ask Laura questions that they have about anything that they have. Then Jason, why don't you go first and we'll just walk down the board.
Well, um, I did not bring a list of prepared questions for Laura today, I.
You're gonna speak first and then, I mean, I can talk a little bit about. Where we're at, since I haven't been here in person on a lot of these items. There's another attorney, obviously Catherine Kaufman, who's a great attorney, working at the planning commission level, and then we've been, um, providing other documents as well, which can be a little confusing. Um, so, and I know the board also is very aware of PA two thirty-three. And has seen a lot of the materials from University of Michigan and otherwise. So let me start by saying where I understand you're at, and then you can tell me if I have any misunderstanding of where we're at. Since we didn't handle the planning commission component. Based on what I've seen, uh, the documents that Catherine prepared, the first batch of renewable energy ordinances that came up. Were not written to be a CREEO, a compatible renewable energy ordinance. Um, they were intended to be what the industry would call workable. What I don't know is if, um, you communicated directly with any specific developers in coming up with what was perceived as workable. Now I've turned the Q and A around here.
No.
Yeah, sometime, and I ask that because sometimes a community will have a workable ordinance that they developed. Well, basically because a specific developer came and said, this is what would be workable for us. Because first of all, workable, obviously not a legal term, not anywhere in the statute. It really means an ordinance that a particular applicant likes enough and can live with, that they won't choose to go to the state. Even though it's not a CREEO, so workable is very developer specific. So you might think what you have is workable, I don't know whether an applicant coming to you will agree that it's workable or not, that's really a matter of their opinion. So I understand that went, that workable, quote unquote, workable version, went through the planning commission, public hearing process. Came up to the board and now we're back to the planning commission for the more CREEO documents that we drafted. And those still need to have a public hearing at the planning commission, and so there's no. Uh, certainly for battery and solar, nothing on the books right now.
Correct.
Okay, great, it's good that I have the facts right. Um, so with the CREEO, the way we draft them is to, there's a couple theories on a CREEO. One is that says, okay, all we will do is recite what's in the statute and we won't regulate anything else. Which really doesn't give you any say over anything, it just would be a copy and paste of the statute with nothing else, well, if you're gonna do that. You might as well let them go to the state because there, there's nothing you're really doing, right, other than rubber stamping. Uh, the other approach that we take after a lot of research and working with a lot of communities for the last more than a year. Is to say, the things that the statute doesn't cover, so the things that are not covered by PA two thirty-three. Can still be regulated, but for those items covered by PA two thirty-three, height, setback, those items. Those are going to be a CREEO. So things, for example, like, um, insurance requirements or decommissioning bonds or geographical location. Are not covered at all in PA two thirty-three, so it's our position that you can still have a CREEO. If you're regulating things not covered by PA two thirty-three, as long as those things PA two thirty-three speaks to, do need the requirements. So that's what we've been doing for, again, more than a year with communities. When the Michigan Public Service Commission came out with its application instructions, um, in October, on October tenth. They went far beyond application instructions and said, it's only a CREEO if it only has those items that are stated in the statute. And if it says anything else, it's not a CREEO. That's not what the law says. Um, and that's why our firm, on behalf of seventy-nine municipalities, filed an appeal of the MPSC's adoption of those instructions. And that is still pending. There is no stay in place, so the MPSC is able to process applications while that lawsuit is pending. And we obviously hope that will be resolved as expeditiously as possible. Right now, though, we still recommend that clients to have that CREEO language so that they can take the position. When you get a developer like the Vesper Energy that says, hey, do you have a CREEO? We want to be in a position to have that. Now, time, timing wise, and I saw the email from, from Catherine as well, and I don't think we disagree really on any of this. You're not likely to have it adopted if it has to go to the county in thirty days. But I still think you can say it's in the process of being adopted and you still want to proceed with that. Because they may not be the only developer to come knocking, so then you'd have it in place for future ones. Um, is there a risk that the courts down the line will say, nope, all you can have is what's in the statute? It's possible, we think that's legally wrong, and we think, we hope the Court of Appeals will agree with us, and if not them, then that's. You know, why they invented the Michigan Supreme Court. Um, but still, best practice and our recommendation right now is to have that CREEO language. Um, so that's kind of where I see the township at, and let me be clear, I, if you want to have a workable and not a. What you, you know, whatever workable is, and not a CREEO, those are all policy decisions. If you say, we're happy for developers to go to the state, we can join the interveners and, you know, get money and we don't need local zoning. That's a, that's a policy decision, and I'm not here to advocate one way or the other. But if you want to try to keep some level of local zoning control, which we have found most of our clients do, then we recommend the CREEO language approach.
Um, could you explain to our citizens? What exactly the PA two thirty-three is in a real simple term and how we have no control over that?
Right, yes, this is not something that the township made up. Um, so back in November of twenty twenty-three, in a very short period of time, late in the night. Um, our legislature approved and Governor Whitmer signed PA two thirty-three. Which basically says that Michigan Public Service Commission, so appointed folks in Lansing. Have the jurisdiction to decide the location, the siting of wind, solar and battery energy storage facilities. Unless a local governmental unit like the township. Has what they call a compatible renewable energy ordinance or CREEO, C R E O. For it to be a CREEO, it has to meet very specific setback, height and noise requirements that are very industry friendly. The reason this came up is because a lot of communities were adopting zoning ordinances under their zoning authority. That were more restrictive or more protective than the industry wanted, and I don't think anyone, even on the industry, if they were here, would disagree with that statement. Um, and so their lobbyists, uh, went to Lansing and said, hey, we can't get our projects done. From their perspective, we can't meet these renewable energy goals because all these townships. Keep, you know, requiring it to be more quiet than, than we can make it in a financially economically viable way. Or they're requiring such setbacks that we can't make them as big or put them where we want to put them. Um, hey Lansing, if you want us to have renewable energy, you've got to take away some of this control from the townships, cause it's blocking us out. That's how I think they would, um, sort of explain how that came to be. So the statute says, yeah, townships, you are only going to get to keep your local zoning control. If you follow these very industry friendly requirements for some of the most hot topic items. And so that's been the law, it took effect in November of twenty twenty-four, so there was a year between when it was signed and when it took effect. And we were working hard everywhere, following the statute, again, trying to get this CREEO language while still. Keeping some protections for communities that are not inconsistent with the statute. Again, because the statute doesn't speak to things like where they can be located, saying it can be, you know, in ag. Under the statute, it, it went to the MPSC, it could, it could be anywhere, it could be residential, I mean, there's just no locational dictates in the statute. So kind of a locational requirement, and again, things like a decommissioning bond, if they go bankrupt, who's gonna clean it up? And there should be money put aside so that the township and the property owners are protected. That's not required or provided for in PA two thirty-three. So we think and we believe, and we have, you know, case law that supports us, we believe that if it's not spoken for in the statute. It's still fair game for us to regulate in our zoning.
But we don't have a choice, so if you, our citizens say we don't want it in our township, we don't have a choice.
If you want to stay here and say, we don't want any of it, we're going to adopt an ordinance banning it. Or we're gonna adopt an ordinance that's not a CREEO and that's, you know, much more protective. They can just say, okay, that's nice, we're going to the Michigan Public Service Commission, and the state will allow us to have it, no matter what you say.
Along with the thing, if there, or if we establish a. And I may have the wrong term here, but I think the, an industrial overlay. Parcel or piece in our township. Uh, would that give the township and our, and our taxpayers the protection? If the developer came in and said, oh, that piece won't work. But this is the only piece in our township that's, that, that this type of be of, uh, of, of thing can be. Can, can, can be put in.
So it's our position, and this is not a secret, this is what we've said in the lawsuit, that you still have the authority to create an overlay. And say where they are located, the state is taking the position that you don't.
So if we don't win the lawsuit.
And that's why we're fighting, and that's why beyond the seventy-nine, we have dozens more communities that have adopted resolutions of support, because it's so. It, it's just stripping away any semblance of local control.
What? What if we had this overlay or we had a CREEO? And, uh. Uh, let's say a developer come in and, and said, okay, this is, this is good, we'll put it here. And if the law changes down the road. Would townships that already have these established and this CREEO, would they be like grandfathered in? So the new developer would have to follow the new, uh, laws?
Yeah, generally, if it's already built and operating, if the law changes, they're not gonna, it's not gonna have to be torn down, it'll be a prior lawful non-comforming use.
But would it protect the township perhaps from some, a new one coming in?
Right, so if the law changed, if PA two thirty-three went away. And we're back to just having your ordinance be what you want it to be, and an applicant came in and didn't meet your ordinance, and you would not have to allow them. Even if there was already one under PA two thirty-three operating.
Okay.
Could you create something that we could let our citizens know, cause there's, you know, there's twenty-five hundred of them and there's not that many here. But a lot of people don't know about it, they don't know what's, what's coming.
Some, we got some language we could kind of finesse into a more public.
We'll put it on our website and maybe put an art, article in the paper or something.
Cause you're right, I go to a lot of, and I go to a lot of planning commission meetings where. It, it's, it's, I don't wanna say funny, that's not the right word, but you'll have a planning commission that's been wrestling with this for more than a year. And someone will come to a meeting for the first time and say, did you know that these things are really bad? Well, we don't really, we're not, you know, do, I'm not saying they are bad, but it's like, but it's not something we have the control over. If we just say, well, we're not gonna allow them, then again, they can just go to the state.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think as well as the tax abatement, uh, language and things, it's up to the township?
If you're talking about I F T, an industrial facilities tax exemption, that is up to the township. They can appeal if you deny it, but.
Right, okay.
It's in our best interest to have that overlay district and designate where we want it instead of them. That's the bottom line, right? State comes in and wants to do something, they're gonna do a CREEO anyways, wherever they want.
If we lose the lawsuit and we lose it on appeal, then the overlay is not gonna protect you, but right now it's best practice and it's our recommendation. To have some kind of locational requirement.
And that would be your recommendation to us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else, uh, you're from the planning commission, Jason.
I mean, I mean, I think we've drifted over into J one, is that safe to say?
Sure, say that we're over in.
Okay, yeah. No, it's great, no, it's great, I mean, I think, I think all that's very helpful background, probably for a lot of people that haven't been wrestling with this for a year. I think the reason I wanted on the agenda, um, is, you know, our board sent. The, the draft CREEO that you guys, uh, prepared for us back to the planning commission, we voted to send it through the normal process to. Place notice and get a public hearing, just like we did with the workable, I think, um. You know, as a matter of policy. Given your great summary, the, the order of how this all happened was very interesting, and I think it's at least worth consideration of. You know, what is our next step? I hear that you're saying this is your recommendation, um, so we had the workable. Um, we didn't adopt the workable formally, because right about that time, we were getting pushed back from citizens saying. We don't think you should work with, we don't think you should have any ordinance, we think you should let it go to the state. So we kind of were trying to pause and do our due diligence and make the right decision. Then the lawsuit kind of came up, which sort of changed the game a little bit, it was like we had a new option, so to speak. Um, so then we pursued that, but then in the meantime, while that happened. Then we did have a developer come and say, we're making the formal application to the state. So I think, as you probably noted from Catherine's, um, email. Um, she, I think, is in agreement that probably the safest bet is a CREEO, but I think it's at least worth. Conversation now that we have Vesper. Appearing to bypass all that and going through the state, if we can't get that CREEO adopted for two to three months because of process. You know, the CREEO is not as restrictive. As you noted, as the workable ordinances that we had worked up, and that was the whole idea. Back at the initial point of this process, we said, well, let's adopt something at the township level that is the most restrictive that we can do. Um, and hopefully be able to work with any developers and get the better result for our township. So now we're past all that, and I think, is it even worth considering? To what degree do we want to have our ordinances be restrictive? Cause if we adopted CREEO, it will be the minimal restrictions, right, essentially?
Um, other than the things that follow the statute.
Right.
What we say minimal restrictions, right, I mean, it has addition, I would say additional protections or additional things that are required of the applicant, if that's fair.
Yes.
CREEO part, yes, is this, is what the statute requires for height setback, noise, fencing, lighting.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and that was what we had done. At the PC level and sent it through to the board and all that, was we said, we don't like those setbacks, those are not good, we don't like the decibel, we want to make it, you know. We want to have better protection for the township, so now, now it seems like the decision is. We have a developer who might bypass it anyways. We're back to our three options, our options are workable, more restrictions. I mean, maybe workable doesn't matter anymore, but we could have another developer come in that would work with a workable ordinance, in theory.
I was gonna say, if you really want to think of it as workable, I think. You have a specific interested developer, I think you would ask them, do you view this as workable? Is this something you would voluntarily comply with? And they might say, no, that's not workable at all, we don't like that at all, and then, you know, you don't actually have a workable ordinance.
Right.
You just have a non-compliant ordinance.
Well, I think that's, that's where we're looking for some legal direction at this point, is now that they've initiated the process. How do we legally navigate those waters to go to them and say? Hey, we still have this workable ordinance that we didn't pass as a board. Does this work for you, or do we say, we'll have a CREEO in three months?
I think both, I think you can do both, frankly, um. And it, just because they say, yeah, we would work with that, I mean, you still have to decide if that's what you want to adopt, cause then you have to live with that, right? At least for this project, um, so there's a couple ways that could happen. One is in that meeting with the supervisor that's required by PA two thirty-three, where you meet with the representatives, and that's an opportunity. For a dialogue, cause they're supposed to have site plans and other definitive plans, so. They might say, no, you know, our site plan is gonna require these setbacks and your ordinance, but then they might say, but if you changed your setbacks to X. It might not be the same as the, a CREEO, but it might be something that they can live with. And maybe, or maybe not, the township board can live with, so I think there is an opportunity, if you want to have that dialogue. The other option is to get their legal representative's information and redo the communication.
Good.
I don't have a, you know, preference either way, so that's another option.
Cause we do still have to contend with the, the thought that there are citizens that have expressed. We don't think we should adopt any ordinance for these types of projects. And if somebody comes in, let them go to the state and work through the state, I mean.
I have, I have, I say one client for sure that very overtly to, made the decision. We're not going to have a CREEO, we're going to adopt the ordinance we want to have, and it's gonna be the state's problem or the state, I don't say state's fault, but basically. A project didn't get approved by the state, we didn't approve it. You know, like, we don't want to have our hands on something that we don't like, or that is stuff we can't live with. So that's one, that's not the majority approach, um, but that is one approach I'm thinking about.
And, and our approach all along has been, we're trying to find the least worst option for our township. You know, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so do.
And so.
Yes.
Is the least worst option now, um. I mean, it seems like the ideal scenario is if you had ordinances that. Were as restrictive as you wanted them to be, or they could be, and you had a developer that said, sure, I'll work with those. That's the ideal scenario, right?
Yeah, that would be the dream, I haven't seen that happen anywhere.
But it's, it's just interesting now, because at at first, when we said, here's our workable ordinances, there was, there the, there was the real possibility that you could say. Oh, well, they'll say they're gonna work with you, but come November, when they're allowed to go to the state, they could just. Decide not to, well, we're past that now, and we already know that they've gone to the state. So in my mind, if you could have dialogue with them, and they would say, yes, we'll work with that ordinance. They would have every incentive to do that now, right? I mean, they've already passed the deadline of.
Yeah, it it's cheaper, I think, to avoid going to the M P S, so I think that that's why I still see some. Developers and their legal representatives coming to meetings and saying. I've even seen one, they petitioned for a work, the the developer petitioned for an ordinance that they viewed as workable, because they would rather go through the municipality. But they're not gonna do it if it's not something that they can make as profitable as they, you know, need to make it for their business plans.
Yeah, yeah.
So dialogue's not a bad idea, if that's what a majority of the board wants to do.
And I think this seems logical, but I'll just ask it nonetheless, but you can't have a Creo and a workable at the same time. Or like have it applied to different scenarios?
Not, not, well, I mean, maybe battery one, solar another, but within the same ordinance, I don't know how that would.
Right. Yeah, so I think. I guess my assessment would be for us now is. If we went to Vesper and they were willing to to work with us on a workable and and we passed a workable, then. Doesn't that put you in the best possible situation, because you have a more restrictive ordinance? That at least you can get. You can have conversation with future projects, I mean, Vesper's kinda already moving, so that's.
It's the best if it's something that the township can live with.
Yeah.
Because what they view as workable, you know, you've gotta decide for the township and for the residents, if it's, if it's something that you can live with signing off on.
Yeah.
And I don't know the answer to that, I I don't know what they will view as workable, or what, you know, the board would want.
Well, I think we we were, we were proceeding under the premise that, yes, we could live with. An ordinance that we wrote, rather than being kinda forced to do an ordinance that is a, is a low bar requirement. That the state has. So. I don't know, do you guys?
It sounds like to me, the bottom line is. To do the best that the township can do for our citizens, and no matter what deal you make. You're not gonna please everybody.
Always true.
But I think that uh. The bottom line is, we should probably adopt a workable ordinance, get a hold of Vesper and say, these are our. This is our ordinance, this is what what involves. Does that work out, can you, can you live with that?
I I think, and and I would maybe not go so far as saying that you're going to adopt a workable, but I think you can at least find out what workable is.
Okay, yeah.
Because you don't know if you're gonna adopt it, it might be something that you're like, oh, we're not putting a battery storage plant next to the school. You know, I, we don't know what, I'm not saying that's what Vesper wants to do.
Right.
For the record in the newspaper, I'm not saying that's what Vesper wants to do, but we don't know.
Right.
I think we, I think we started to learn some of that when they came to the meetings and we had the draft ordinance, and there was questions about. Decibel meters and 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 they were saying, hey, we think we can limit it to this, so I mean, I think, I think we were starting to coalesce in that direction. But um, can you do an overlay with a workable, or does it, does an overlay have to go with a Creo?
So again, workable just means whatever specific developer is okay with.
Okay.
So I don't know the answer to that, the other thing I would say is, Vesper is just battery, right?
Yes.
I would still move forward with Creo on your other renewable. Do you have both solar and wind, or do you just have solar?
We just have solar, yeah.
So you're suggesting, I mean, if we do a workable, this is for the next company that comes in, is really what's going on. It's not for Vesper, because they're gonna go to the state if whatever we choose doesn't work for them.
They're gonna go to state if whatever you choose doesn't work for them, but I think the di- the discussion was, could you have a dialogue with them now to say, hey? If you don't wanna go to the state, what could be, you know, what could?
What could you live with?
You live with this workable ordinance, here's the draft ordinance. That's not a Creo, say, would you view this as workable for your project? And they might say, no, we're going to the state, and then you're right, then I would just say do a Creo. But my point is, if there's something that the board is comfortable with, and Vesper's comfortable with. Then you keep it at least at local zoning and avoid the fight about whether it is or isn't a Creo.
Yeah.
But it doesn't really matter for the next guy, because it's not customized.
But if we did a Creo, we could do the overlay and have it only in industrial area, so.
And you could do that for what you proposed on the workable as well, my point was just, it's only workable if they wanna do it.
Yeah. I don't know if this is helpful, but like, to give a tangible example of the difference, maybe, so in the Creo. Um, and I I presume this came kinda from the state guidelines, the setback is. Three hundred feet from the nearest wall of the net of the dwelling, okay? And when we went through to draft our workable at the P C, we said, that's a ridiculous setback, we want it a hundred feet from the center line. Typically how we do our setbacks. And so if we say we're gonna adopt a Creo, we're we're basically saying, we're okay with. The levels that the state essentially has set. Versus saying, we don't really like those setbacks, we're not cool with sixty-five decibels, we want it to be fifty-five decibels. So we we can tweak that down and make it more restrictive if we want, and again, knowing that. Every company that comes in after that has to decide if that's workable or not. And if they they decide it's not, then they can go to the state anyways, right? So that that's sort of like, it's like the big picture thinking of. What do we want it to look like if, assuming that other renewables are gonna come into the township, is that, is that a fair?
The only gloss I would put on that is not necessarily that you like the state's requirements, but that you're willing to accept them to. Maintain some local control and have other protections in your ordinance.
Okay.
So workable would be the best way to go, both parties can live with that?
It's a big, I haven't seen, I I I can't say I've seen it happen for any of my clients yet, although we're very early in the process, because. Often, you know, they're gonna be like, yeah, what's workable is sixty-five decibels, and you know, a hundred foot setbacks, and I don't, you know, we just don't know.
Right.
So if the stars aligned. And you were like, yeah, we could, that's, we're totally good with that, that's what we wanna do as a policy matter, and they also are like, yes, we can do that, that will make us a lot of money. If those two things actually align, you know, it may work out well, will they align?
Right, right.
I don't know.
Right.
Our overlay district uh lays out an area where you don't have a lot of residential. It also comes down where we're, we say in our master plan that we want the industrial on a county road. And if you look at County Road two fifteen, and it'll start from three eighty-eight, you got the gas station, you got the post office, you got. You got the Michigan Blueberry Association. You get down around the corner, you got a machine shop, that's a commercial, you got the gas company on three eighty-four. Used to have North Lake Inn on three eighty-four, you come down to Stokes Farm Market. And then you uh come into uh Breachville with a lot of business and commercial. And then this area that we're picking right now for the overlay would fall into that industrial area. For the, probably the best choice in our township if we're gonna do this, to put it there.
Was there, there was no overlay with the workable that went through?
No.
Okay.
Just that, just that it be an ag.
Okay, just an.
Yeah, yeah.
But it, and it should be, but on a county road, because our secondary roads aren't gonna take the. Abuse.
Yeah, because if you wanted to go back and put an overlay in your workable, then you have to go through the whole process again, so then you're, and and you're more timed out.
Well, and an overlay would be great if. Especially if the lawsuit goes in our favor.
Yes.
However. Presenting an overlay to Vesper right now. Probably would make it less workable to them, because they already have a parcel picked out, and it's not in the overlay.
Yeah, so they may say like, yeah, no, we're.
Yeah, so that's where it gets a little complicated.
Right, or if you say, we can live with it in that location, yeah, there's a lot of, can we live with it here? And there's a lot we don't know about whether they would have any appetite. For that first ordinance that came up at all, or if they're like, yeah, that's not gonna work with our project.
Right.
And if they say that, then, well, really, you've got, we're gonna have a Creo in two months, and they're gonna say, that's nice, we're going to.
How much time do we have? To get our uh overlay district and that approved if we go that way.
Let me pull it up so I don't misspeak.
You mean from? Vesper's end?
I have a flow chart, my flow chart.
She'll know how long it takes to get the process through.
Alright, so once they send the letter. Um, then with, obviously, it's within thirty days that you need to uh provide the Creo, which we don't have. Um, the next step, if there is no notice of a Creo within that thirty days. They have to notify the clerk that a public meeting will be held in the township. Um, and they have to provide the site plan, and they have to provide that notice and site plan at least thirty days before that public meeting. And then they must publish notice of that public meeting at least fourteen days uh before the public meeting. So it winds up being really. In a sixty day, I mean, it's a short timeframe.
Well, planning commission is gonna have their public hearing. Then they're gonna meet next uh March.
When's their public, when's your public hearing?
One second, let me pull up the calendar.
Doesn't that then just have to go back to the uh the county commissioners as well?
Yeah, that'd be a thirty day.
So that'd be another thirty.
But I thought they were gonna, uh, Tasha was gonna get that rushed, or?
Yeah, we, it did line up in our favor on the calendar a little bit, so if we um. We're going to do notice. Of the public hearing. On March twelfth.
You need notice, or you're gonna have the public?
Sorry, public hearing on March twelfth, we've already initiated the the public notice uh action, and then.
Then after that, you're gonna approve it at the same night? Recommend it to the township board?
Well, while we have to, if we wanna hit. The county planning commission is the last Thursday of the month, which is the twenty-seventh, they need ten days advance notice, so. It's a very, very tight timeline.
Yeah.
But we could get it to the county for their meeting on the twenty-seventh.
And then the township board.
After the twenty-seventh approves it.
Yep, could be a special meeting.
It could be special meeting.
And then uh it gets published, and we got seven or ten days. For approval. So it's possible we can make that schedule. The stars.
Yeah, where where you're gonna get pushed back is not having the actual compatible ordinance within the thirty days, although. It's thirty days after the meeting, according to the statute, the developers have been playing a little fast and loose with when that thirty days runs, and we've been pushing back on that too. So, do you have a meeting scheduled yet? With the, with Vesper?
Well, you're gonna be there.
Excellent. My my schedule, no, we just need to make sure that we're accommodating everyone's busy schedules, and it does have to be um. Is that totally clear, if the meeting has to be within thirty days, that's probably the way.
Of the letter?
Yeah, and that letter was dated last, last week or this week? That was last week. So if we met in March, yeah, we'd still be with them, you could get it done.
On a side note, I I think I read someplace that if, if. Anybody, if a one township in the county has a Creo, and I'm talking Creo now, then. The county has to have one as well, and the other township.
That is a, and that's why I started to kinda smiling when you said that, because it's not, it's it's a very commonly repeated incorrect statement. That the state put out at some point, that has no basis in the law.
Okay.
In one of their powerpoints.
Well, that's a meeting that we have with them, we probably will know whether we can uh. Which way to go, right, and we can present the. We're gonna go to this, and then you won't have to go to the state at that point.
If I understood that right, we could say at that meeting, look, we've got a Creo that's going to be in effect, you know, within the thirty days, however. There's also, there's also this workable ordinance that's been through the public hearing process already. Would you be able to work with this, or what tweaks, if we can decide if those are substantial or not, would be needed for you to work with that?
Yeah, and if we can get them to move over to the other location, that would even be better for us, and maybe there's some. Some things we could do there with uh. To make that happen.
Like.
Like, I mean, I know, I know they're interested in getting a reduction in uh.
Yeah.
But we don't own that piece of property, yeah.
Just because you have an overlay district, those parcels have to be willing to sell, like, you, they can't just come there automatically, because there's an overlay, it's just saying. We're allowing some space, but if.
Well, the bottom line is, if nobody in this township was willing to sell any property to them, they couldn't come in.
That's very true.
Offer them a lot of money, they're gonna sell their property, no matter who they are.
I think that's probably your best game plan.
So the planning commission then has has already got this back to your your firm, to you guys to look at, or?
We've already, no, we sent it to them.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or sent it to you. Sent it to Catherine.
Okay. Let's get real strategic here. We know that Vesper has a land deal with this property they're interested in. A lot of the problems with that parcel was because there's water. It's it's a bad location, and and our citizens express that vehemently. Would there be a way if Vesper was willing to work with our workable? For their project, that we could also come in later with a Creo for future projects, and that would replace the workable. So that we get the benefit of a better deal with Vesper. With better ordinances for this particular project, but then replace it with a Creo?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I I think that's worth a conversation with Vesper, don't you?
Yeah, again, all contention on what they.
Right, I mean, they they can always decide.
And do, and there's nothing wrong with that, somebody else could come in tomorrow and also apply, right? I mean, this isn't, we're not doing, we don't know, we can't control when people come in. But if you had kind of this commitment, not finding that Vesper's gonna move forward. And then you could do a Creo that says, okay, for applications received after this date, this other ordinance is in effect.
Might be kinda the best of all worlds, I don't know.
I think so.
What what do you think? I know you can't speak for Vesper.
No, it it is hard to.
Well, here's what I think, I think, I think what we do is, we we go forward with this overlay district in the Creo. And then when we have this meeting, we're gonna have to, at that meeting, try to, try to sell that, and if we can't sell that, then we're gonna offer them the uh. Workable. That's about all we can do.
Wouldn't we offer the workable first?
I'd say, we might want to offer the workable, because the workable has more favorable setbacks and things like that for the township.
I'm worried about the roads.
I think we have road repair in the.
And I'm worried about the.
Location though, yeah, because the.
More to be location, I mean.
Location rather than the overlay location.
Sorry, say that again.
So I think what kinda saying is, we want to offer the Creo, the Creo first and say, could, would you put it in this location? Because then the workable is not in that overlay location.
And the noises, there's truly no population in that area.
And maybe that first part about the Creo might be a, you know, short conversation, or you can say, we've already got property.
Right.
So I I I really think we ought to go with a Creo and the overlay district, move it forward, get it done soon as we can, and. Hopefully that when we get into negotiations, we can try to get them to move it over there. And I guess a push comes to shove, we. Go to the workable where it's, they want.
Yeah, I think during that meeting, you need to explore both of those. If that's, if that's the will of the board.
I mean, if they, if they already have a land deal. The chances of them going to the overlay would be zero.
My understanding, they already have a land deal with uh Busy Bee too.
Is that in the overlay?
The property, oh, no, that's in the overlay district.
Wha- what kinda deal do they have there?
Didn't I hear that they, they hear from you that? Someone told me Busy Bee is in contract lease agreement.
There's a lot of people um that have solar lease.
Solar lease agreements, so if they come in, they're leasing their property for fifty bucks an acre. It's just holding that and so they're the ones that can get it, but. I don't know what Busy Bee has.
Maybe start with uh, yeah, what's your site plan, where are you putting this and do you have other location options? Yeah.
Didn't we already check the Vesper and they were not interested in the location that I think you're talking about in the overlay?
I have not had any conversations about the overlay district with Vesper.
But I think keeping the Crio on that timeline is important.
Okay.
Alright.
I thought, I thought the Vesper said they had already looked at that parcel and that uh property. Area and the, they said it would uh disrupt the habitat and the. Uh, and it was too, too wet form and, and some other things.
I think so too.
I think.
Be able to find.
I think somebody had said.
Cause I think there was an email.
Yeah, I think they did. Anyway. Okay. Anything else that we need to?
So, we've already kind of activated the process to um adopt the Crio, so we can stick to that and keep the timeline as short as possible. And then.
I think, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I think um I would wanna find out who their legal representative is, because if I'm gonna be there, they're gonna want their legal there and it may be good to open. The conversation, I'm not sure who's representing them, I don't know if it's um, you know. Barnum who's representing a lot.
I think it sent you an email with all the information with the person.
Well, I saw the, the representative, but I'm not sure who their, what law firm they're using.
Oh, I, I don't know that.
Yeah, and we may need to ask, because we've run into that elsewhere where if one side's lawyer is.
Actually, I think Russell's told me one time he was the attorney. Or was he an attorney for, for them? But we should check with him.
Yeah. And the way I would do that is say that you're gonna have their, your, the township attorney present, so you wanna know if they're gonna have their attorney present and so that the attorneys can connect.
Okay.
You're gonna make that contact?
If uh, I, I can, do you want me to just reach out directly to Vesper, I'm happy to do that. I will copy you on that.
Bernie, actually, we need to take? I don't think so. Okay, that took care of. Uh, J one and J three, I got J two there, uh, that's right back to you on the planning commission annual report.
Yep, um. The attachment there is the uh twenty twenty four annual report from the planning commission, I just, I wanted to submit that and then also. Um, make a few comments, I guess, since I didn't hit the deadline to submit my trustee report, I think I'll. Uh, I brought copies of this, I'll submit this, um, is it, is it okay to submit this as my report? Um, at the minute, I'll pass these down. Um, just a few comments I wanna make uh to give everybody an update, um, I know there's been some. Friction between the board and the planning commission, but I feel like we're making um good progress. And headway, uh, so a couple highlights, we had a new planning commission member, uh Frank. Was uh appointed and sworn in at our February meeting, so welcome Frank. Um, I did in fact complete the MSU citizen planner course. And uh it was, it took some time, but it was a very worthwhile endeavor, I learned a lot and I am planning to pursue the master citizen planner certification in the next few months. Um, the PC formally adopted by unanimous vote some new expectations and protocols at our last meeting. And those are as follows, we are developing a new onboarding process for new members with a printed manual and helpful information. And a formal orientation before beginning their work on the PC. Um, new planning commission members will be required to take the citizen planner course within three months of being sworn in. So obviously we'll have to start communicating that to future prospective members. Uh, PC members will also be expected to attend uh one continuing education seminar, webinar, conference. Each subsequent year of their term after completing the citizen planner course. And we also voted to adopt a checklist for any uh future zoning text amendment processes moving forward. Um, I kinda mentioned this at our previous meeting, twenty twenty five does mark five years since our last. Uh, since our master plan was adopted, and I believe I learned this in the citizen planner course, but I could be wrong. That uh the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires that the planning commission at least reviews the master plan every five years, we don't have to rewrite it, but we need to review it, so. Uh, the PC discussed initiating a review process. And we did talk about uh what sort of budget that might require if we brought in additional support or consultants, but uh I think. We can have future dialogue about that, Ken, cuz you proposed the idea that maybe. Uh, we could keep that review limited and look at rewriting a couple years down the road because we have a lot of other fish to fry. Um, and then uh lastly, I think, I think everybody knows this and it sounds like we're gonna maybe try to address that uh under new business, but we still have. Uh, two commission members that are currently serving as holdovers, so we need to officially fill two positions. And I think um. While we're technically still able to function uh with large issues such as renewable energy ordinances. Uh, the Vesper project apparently now moving through the state, master plan review. And my, my estimation that we'll probably have an increase in building projects fueled by an improving economy. I think it'd be better for our township if the PC was fully constituted with experienced appointed members, so that's my report.
Okay, Juan, we're setting the meeting for uh. Not the final budget, but we're gonna take another hit at our budget on Saturday uh starting at ten o'clock. We'll need to get notice and. Hold on that, and. The next one is I have a cost recovery ordinance, did you look at that? You have any problems with it? We had one individual that did thirty nine calls.
I have some things to say about it.
Okay.
We've had, so I heard what you said, that's such a small amount of a budget. I used to do medical billing, it's so much work, so. Can we, is there any way to possibly? See if we can do something with the, the three frequent flyers um.
There's always other options, uh, one of the, one of the things that um. Medical people have been trying to do to alleviate some of this. Is they instituted what's called a community paramedic program and this person. Reactively goes to these places, like scheduled, I'm gonna go visit. Uh, person A, B, and C on these specific days, just to check in. Take their vital signs, see if there's anything, so that they're not utilizing the emet- the emergency system. Outside of. The other type of, cuz there's, there's a lot of, we had. I had one yesterday, I think, actually it's two, back to back yesterday while we were trying to do uh final training, uh final testing, so. Now that we would do community paramedicine. But we. Um, see why we couldn't do something like that, but when we're talking about. People that we haven't. See, I don't know if the word education is the right word, we haven't um. Helped in, helped to understand the system. Um, many of them view EMS as the only option available for home healthcare, so I'm gonna call them. And because we have to go. Our license requires that we have to go, party departments, uh, my brother was talking about this earlier, we were talking about this, party departments don't have to go, what crap, where? It's not good for the, it's not good for the public eye, but if someone called nine one one said, we have a fire, that sounds like a U problem. That, that really could be what's going on, but when EMS is activated, thou shall go, or do you stand the risk probably of losing your license? Um, our, our doc, Dr. Tom Mikulski is not one to play around with citizens, if they say, I need help, you shall go. Well, so if we had a, a system in place that, that kinda helped. Alleviate that, the perceived need, I need to call EMS. That might help, but you're, you're still gonna be hovering and it just won't be in an emergency fashion. I, I don't know if that answered your question, but I mean, we have thought. As a stage about that, right? Um, so.
Well, my fear is it's gonna cost us more than we would ever recover um to do billing and things like that, and it's like getting blood out of a tree. Should we do something with engage like senior services?
Well, you, you, we, Jeremy uh set up billing in the other, his, our old department, when it went from. Where we are now to a full-time department, it, it was pittance return.
I've done it on two different, I've done, I've set it up on two different departments, billing policies. And as many of you know, as soon as you generate an invoice. Doesn't matter, you generate debt, debt to the, debt to the citizens. And what's the likelihood of you getting that debt back, and you've done medical billing and you know that. Uh, the host department's kind of at best. At best gonna get ninety-two percent, that's after contractual write-offs with Medicare Medicaid. And, and they don't pay for uh lift assists or uh inlet assists, things like that. So uh on the fireside, uh, they were really pushing on uh community risk reduction. Uh, but that, and that's more of an education that they, make sure they have the smoke alarm, make sure that the rugs aren't slipping out from underneath them, things like that. And, and the onus is, does go to the citizens and the citizens' family at some point. To where they have to be willing to receive that help and receive that, that education or receive those uh. Helpful hints and, and things that, that'll make their lives a lot easier, so uh. I caution you on, on billing policies, uh, I really do, because you're gonna go down a lost leader. It's gonna end up costing you more.
Well, I do think we need to have some action, some helpful action, like.
Right, right, so if, if you're, if you're talking medical, I, I completely agree. Uh, if you're talking to recover, cost recovery, anything on fire, you know that insurance is on pace so much, so uh. And the folks that are burning illegally or doing those kinds of things, I can tell you right now on a structured fire. You can get five hundred dollars, thousand dollars without a problem. Uh, anybody insurance though.
Right.
Yeah, um, but our, what if they don't have insurance, you still have to bill, right? Right, and, and so.
Can't discriminate.
You cannot discriminate, so same way with car accidents, if you do an extrication, automatic billing. If you do a hazmat scenario, you can do standard FEMA rates which are amazing. But if they're not.
I think in the medical too, you know, cuz I've been tracking the frequent flyers also and. It just seems like we should maybe try something else first, some intervention of some sort, you know, maybe call. EHS and say, what can we do to help this person?
You know, so some of the things that we do, and this is, I've been running into this in other places, people have great ideas. We've already, these are part of our policy, right? If you wanna be part of the department, we'd love to have you come in and know that, but when we come against these frequent flyers, know that. The protective services, D H, they al- they already know what's going on, we said, there's a, there's a formula fell off. I set it up electronically, they get it that same day, but then what happens from there is beyond our control, we don't get any control. And most of them don't even hear what happens with that resolution, right, I had a neighbor who was Alzheimer's, right? And she would just walk into my house. Well, I have a choice, I can be a good human being to her and remind, and not remind her, cuz she won't remember, just stay at home. And then remind the other person that was taking care of her, here are the tools you can use. But they get to choose whether they're gonna do that or not, I mean.
Yeah.
You, you can't legislate people in, into doing the right thing, no matter how much laws you put in place, how many programs you put out there. All of those things, I mean, everything, everything that my brother and I do is because we care about human beings. And frequently, my brother will say, start with being a good human. And we are, and I'm not so worried, good humans, but I'm saying, uh, your fire department actively does participate in community risk reduction. So uh we, we do uh the carbon monoxide uh alarms and smoke detectors. And when we go out to these, these folks, we do, we do try to educate the best we can, uh, fall alarms, things like that. Um, but again, you know, uh. An emergency is, is, is a perspective sometimes, so uh we let alone.
You, 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 you asked for, for this about a month ago, I think, on your list, did you want us not to generate that?
I did this.
I think we asked first for something.
I did this in the attempt to address initiative was brought to me from you, saying, how are you going to take care of this?
Okay.
And I say this was a great idea, wasn't it, idea?
I'm just worried we can't enforce what we have now, I mean, we really need to dial it back and deal with what we have.
Yeah.
I mean, you, 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 you brought it up though that. Um, these frequent flyers, the thirty nines, the, the, the twelves, the twenty fours, they are gonna take a lot of our time. Um, I look at it from my perspective as, as a citizen, if I call nine one one, I want response. I know that right now, all I can do is key up the mic and say. Send me, this is, this is Chief Robertson, and I'm gonna get all the reinforcements, but that's because I'm part of the fellowship. Right, if you keyed up the mic or called and said, this is citizen so and so, eh, that makes it for you, Ben. Right?
Yeah, the only way that most people get a response is nine one one, is your dispatch, you're going, period.
Well, unless you don't have somebody, and then you're not gonna, but.
I just don't wanna jump into something that's gonna be more work and that.
I agree, I was, I, that was the response. To what you asked me to do, so I did.
My, my only concern when I was looking at this is billing. How are you gonna enforce it, how are you gonna collect it, who's gonna collect it, that, that sort of thing, now if you have something in place that, that could uh. Help with that, that's super.
Well, if, if, if you were gonna go down the billing road, I, I certainly wouldn't start with medical, um. I would, I would start with uh illegal or unlawful burden. Or things like that, where it's not, it's not, it's low frequency, right, and uh. But you gotta have teeth behind that, I think I talked to Ken before, you got, you can't just say this is what we're gonna have, gotta have teeth. You know, you gotta, there's gotta be a consequence to burning illegally, whether it be, you know, mattresses and machine wheels and tires and things like that.
Yeah, right.
Um, uh, so, but you gotta have teeth.
So could we postpone this until we have?
Well, I think we might, well, a car could file it somewhere and we bring it back sometime when they, they say they want it.
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Oh, I had, I had car accidents in there too, where you could actually, right off the bat. Consumers Energy uh for utilities, if you're sitting there waiting, they, they will pay you back.
And that, that is actually a policy with consumers, so yeah, those, they're, 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 if, if you want through. You know, his permission, if you want me to come up with a list, I know our guaranteed payables, payouts. Again, low frequency.
Yeah.
Are we gonna get back more than it takes us to generate the bills?
Exactly, that, that's a unique, so yeah, that, you have, you have to weigh that.
There's companies that do that.
Yeah, I would uh. Uh, do we, we do need a motion for that or just?
No, it was just a small follow-up, taking no action. Okay, I think we're down here to uh. What?
The addition.
The addition. Uh, I'd like to move to appoint uh Jennifer Spears to the planning commission. Uh, she does have a farming background, she's got accounting and business background, she's got environmental and chemicals. And uh. She's there, if you guys would like to ask some questions. Any questions for her?
Uh, I can speak for her, I've worked with her on elections and. Doing payroll and she's helping us work on our personnel things and I think she would be a good, a good addition.
And she's local, she's lived here forty years, I think she'd represent a lot of our citizens.
Any questions?
No. No.
Uh, I moved to approve uh Jennifer Spears onto the planning commission, she'll be serving out a three-year term. That term started on January first. Can I get a second?
What, what, uh, what seat?
Pardon?
What position?
Would be sheriff's.
The sheriff position is open, but the sheriff could be changed. But they gotta vote on that, I'm gonna share, she's getting a three-year. On the planning commission.
Okay, okay, cuz there's a vacancy.
Cuz there's a vacancy there.
There's an expired term.
I made a motion. Did I get a second?
A second.
Here a second, this is roll call vote.
Hold on, now we can get discussion, right? Uh, I would love to hear from you why you wanna be on the planning commission and.
Um, I. Love to serve my community, and um I'm kind of new to the. Coming here, but. Uh I see a lot going on, and I, I'd like to. Represent and. People like me, uh in my community, I like to learn, um. I'd love to. Love to talk in more detail about all of this and everything I've heard, I'm a little overwhelmed, but I'm fast on her, I'm. About however I can.
You just kinda heard about some of the new protocols we adopted in terms of like. Training, continuing education, you don't have any issues with any of that?
No, like I said, I love to learn, so. That was information. Input is my number one strength.
And so, we couldn't rely on you to be our recording secretary then, like we thought.
Well, she could, we could take the meetings and she could record it afterwards.
My only, my only uh. Question would be, do you have the time to do it, and it's not gonna interfere with that, I don't know, I don't know your.
I do, I am quite a busy person, but um. I would make the time difference, this is important.
Any other questions? We got a motion and a second. It's a money thing, uh Finn is a yes, Kara?
Yeah.
Jason?
I will abstain.
Mary?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Welcome aboard. Uh, public comments, Karen?
You're right, it's this crafted one. From everything I know, she seems like a sweetheart, I have no issues other than one. Was there a letter of interest or any notification to anybody prior to? The minute you already started this meeting, that part, I think. Felt like blind sighting Jason. And, and so I would say that's bad protocol, otherwise she seems like a great person, but I. Object to the way that is.
That is why I abstained.
Any other comments? On my monthly report, every month I say I need people on the planning commission, exactly what I'm looking for. So it's been in our, our agenda package all this time. Okay, announcements, uh we got that board meeting on Saturday at ten o'clock. Laura, thank you for showing up today, you've been very, very beneficial to the board. Gary, comments, oh, I got any more comments? Is there someone you saw out there?
No, I said next, next one.
Thank you. Gary?
Would be Saturday at ten o'clock?
Yes.
I have no, uh, I have no comments.
Jason?
Nope.
Mary?
Um, if you haven't paid your taxes, please do so, township will be open the twenty eighth from.
Kara?
I don't have anything.
Jen, I don't have anything. I don't know, let's go ahead and adjourn the meeting at nine.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
I'm gonna say.
Eight thirty three, okay, yeah. You should do this agenda more often.
Shorter than your usual one, I think.